Order, roll call. Tracy Bonkowski.
Here.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert. Present. Rob Canell.
Present.
Craig Sims.
Here.
Chris Dilbert.
Here.
Genevieve Brodset.
Here.
And Rachel Woodson is present. Okay, public hearings, we have none. Approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Lucy? Did you second that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carried. Public comments on agenda items. If someone walks in, I'll go after that. Approval of the minutes for regular meeting August 3rd, 2021. Did everybody receive those?
Yes.
Yes. Motion for those? Right? Second. Tracy? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried to approve August 3rd, 2021 minutes. Communications correspondence workshop, we have none. Matters of consideration or business will be the zoning rezoning of the parcels that we considered and recommended to council at the last meeting. I will share with the board that not all parcels were approved by council to move forward with. The parcels that were not supported were the ones Arlington to
Clark.
27 Clark. To 27 Madrow. In between Meadow Creek and the plaza there. And the one behind Perry Acres was also not. Those were together as one suggestion. The other ones that were approved were the triangle in behind Rite Aid. Does everybody have their map still?
I think I see it in my sleep now.
Do you? The Arlington property that is south of Arlington. The downtown area that was mostly light industrial. And the Roselle area for the multifamily.
Victoria Street?
Victoria is what I defined as that downtown.
Oh, okay.
Okay, it's light industrial, so yes, Victoria Street was supported.
So we gave them five and they approved four.
Correct. So, and the reasons were they just, they wanted to maintain the the
Commercial.
Commercial, thank you. Commercial property there in that one area. And they were content with the multifamily that exists on the south side of that one. So with that, does anybody have any other questions? If not, then we're going to move forward with setting a public hearing. I will show this as well for November. Lori is busy this month with the taxes. And she does not have the time to get all of the notices out, given the broad amount of notices covering the village in a timely manner for October. We made some questions to Sean as to whether we could do it blankly across the village. That was a no. And also with modular home communities, if they had to be notified individually, or if we could just send it to our, their main office. And it was determined we have to send it individually. So that'll be a lot of work for Lori, so she asked for some extra time.
I do have one question on the Arlington property. President Dilbert mentioned that, or Commissioner Dilbert, sorry. Old hen.
Dilbert.
Die. Well, I guess presidents, they get to be called president till they're dead, right? So you can have You mentioned Perry Acres, that the entrance can only come out through Perry Acres, right? Isn't that, didn't you mention that?
Try to say that again.
The access to that site can't come off Arlington Street. It couldn't only come through Perry Acres.
That's my understanding.
Okay, that's why I was
That's my understanding, yes.
Make it true.
That's pretty much the land I've got there. The the next one has to go up to like everyone within 300 feet?
Yes.
So the only parcel that would affect say Meadow Creek would be the Rite Aid. I don't know if that would even qualify.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I would think very minimally. However, the Rite Aid one, would that affect
Across the street?
Across the street. I would think it might.
It was still 300 feet. I think once you get, I mean, once you get your, your tape measure out, I don't think river rope is gonna
It very well may not. Lori didn't really, to be honest, it wasn't really dove into. I just don't know that she has the time.
Yeah.
Regardless, yeah. We really didn't dive into who all, it was just the potential of whether we would have to notify all, or if we could just send it to the one. Any other questions? Okay, so the parcels, I will also note that the final parcel, let me make sure I've got that right. 0633-252005, which is the last one on the agenda, is being removed. We did do John did a little bit more research on that one. And that one is just it is a part of the front property, correct? The right spot there. So that one is not included. So I think our motion, which is a motion which includes all parcel numbers to set a public hearing for November.
Steve, you just removed a parcel.
Yes.
From what, the Victoria?
The Victoria, it's on Main Street. Wow. It, there's a little
Big old sliver right down here. It's a tiny triangle. It's actually a part of the property to the south. There's a house that's actually built on the property line. I think when the map is created, it confined the two parcels together. So it just captured it. So we just gotta figure out why it's separate in our
If you want to show anybody else, Tracy. You want to show it?
I did the same thing.
Liz, did you see it?
Oh, okay, that white one.
No, it's a gray one.
Oh, the gray one behind it, okay. So we need that off. But we're just, so we have the, it says the parcels are listed here. They ended in 007, 028, 019, 012, 004, and 005.
Yes, we removed 00. I, yes, I removed 005.
Okay, because These three up here and that, we were taking Arlington to decor north out. No.
That Arlington is still, it is the south Arlington property.
Okay.
I understand that was here.
I understand now. Okay. So these and all of these would look this.
Okay. Okay, so yeah. Anybody want any clarity on those parcels?
For the public hearing, do we have to set four separate public hearings for each individual parcel?
I believe this is one.
Just one?
Maybe you can just do one.
Just wanted to make sure.
Well, we could, if, if, if something transpires between now and then, we could at that time, at the meet, at the hearing, separate.
Yeah, if you need to partition it.
Well, I think in the motion, we can put, we can list each separate parcel here in motion.
Yeah, that's true. And just not include her.
We could address it at the time of the public hearing. We can just ask whoever would like to speak on this parcel to come forward at this time. And maybe that would give us a little bit more of a
Stinglish.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll do that then.
Yeah, I think like whatever motion has it being, like if there's discrepancies in terms of like what, if there's not consensus. I guess like regardless of what I would probably do is like I group them based like what you're zoning of that. If there's six similar parcels on our zone, the same zone, you could probably put them in the same motion.
Should we say what we're rezoning in front two in the motion?
Which proposed, you could if you want to. Yeah, so this is like part of the hope record.
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah. Okay, so the Rite Aid is going general business. To multifamily, or yes, multifamily. Okay. The Arlington is going from multifamily to single family one, right? Yes. The Roselle property is going from light industrial to multifamily. Okay, and then the Victoria area is going from light industrial to single family two?
I think it's two.
Okay.
Well, single family two allows for smaller lots and I mean personally especially since we squandered our decor north as far as the homes that we're getting there, those 70 foot lots. I would like to see a part of this village that has a larger lot size. So that we retain those people that want to stay in the village and have a hundred foot lot or a larger place to live and still be able to be in New Haven instead of having to keep leaving our community.
The, I agree. The only thing I'd caution on is the fact that the development directly next to it is a circling. We lost some continuity. We could keep similar zoning for places around next to it.
You mean across the creek?
Across the creek, yeah. And then the other thing too is you're also near the downtown. Where we get a little bit of space to swing way out, some more rooftops. And then maybe north of 27 miles, where we want to look at maybe larger lots. Which I think is how it's going to lay down. Because there's more space, more smaller land, and less density. But if you guys wish to do like SF1 or SF, like it's up to you guys. You can figure out what you want to do.
Well, yeah, I see that as probably being the next if, if we do this, that that could respark interest in that area. I mean, especially this owner's change and things over there. That might be our opportunity to get larger estate sized lots. Because south of the downtown and the multi, because we're looking at the multifamily around Roselle and in the downtown area, you can also multifamily out that space as well. I mean, depending how far back it ends up going into the heavy industrial. I mean, it's not being used as a heavy industrial anyways. And there's a whole lot of blank space there at this point. It seems like a good place to put, you know, the denser, denser homes. But I'm so tired of seeing people move out because they can't get a bigger house because there's no lots and that. It just drives me insane, the good people, just because they just want a bigger house. That's my 10 cents on how everybody else feels about it.
I like that 10 cents.
Okay, so we, anybody opposed to making a single family, would be single family one?
Which one?
The Victoria. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes.
Those six parcels? Yes.
If you want, I can tell you what the minimum lot. What's the lot sizes here in a second. So for single family, it is 12,000 square foot little lot. That's about quarter acre. Single family one is 8,700 square feet. And single family two is 7,200 square feet. Lot width going from the largest is 100 feet for lot width for our single family. 70 foot for single family one. And 60 for single family two. So not too much of a difference between SF1 and SF2. It's
SF, the SF one?
It's SF2, I think the other two is where they jump. You go from, there's a 30 to 40 foot difference in lot width. And there's almost 4,000 to 5,000 square feet difference of density. So four acres, yeah, pretty good size. But yeah, so that's, that's the requirement.
I guess I'd be prone to SF alone, no number after it. And even of course, if a development comes and they turn it into a PUD, all those things kind of can fall wayside anyways because whatever you approve of the the PUD is what will overlay the property, right? But we can at least start out with the whole of having a bigger lot there. At least if, especially if they're looking at a building there that they see it's a SF.
What's the minimum square footage on the houses? Do you know that? Everybody did 750 square feet.
So for SF, that's 1,200.
Oh, 12 foot.
For SF1, it's 900. And for SF2 is 768.
I know that Tracy's brought it up in the past about that's someplace that we need to address square footage if we're looking to, to do that. Can we do things within the, within our, within those to increase those square footage sizes? Even though they're
I mean, we could, we could increase the minimum square footage. That's something that's possible. The only thing I'd start buying into, and I swear I don't know the case law on that, is exclusionary zoning. Because traditionally, minimum square footage is used to kind of like pseudo kind of move potential of different populations from living in a specific area because of the higher costs associated with larger lots and square footage.
I think Mr. Dilbert's covered that percentage pretty much. I think you've covered our length and length to including all in the village where we stand now.
Yeah, we never say that we need to exclude, but I would not be opposed to at some point in time, raise our minimum square footage to at least 1,000. And from there, going up. Because I think anything that's an 1,000 is gonna bring down the neighboring properties' values.
But I think it's completely outside the market too. Those blank homes, it wasn't that, but I think that's a reasonable thing to bring up, at least a thousand or something like that.
I'd say a thousand in SF2 and, you know, maybe 1,500 in SF1 and SF2,000.
Yeah. I mean, maybe work up some language to, to make that a council, or a recommendation to council for planning to do those items?
The only repercussions I would say that you get from I think the square footage section we find, I think increasing not before these, but I don't think the same is an issue. The only thing I would say is like if you change, say, the middle lot size standards, which we're not really proposing. But if you did that, then you have to do the math in terms of how many properties would have to be now compliant. And you wouldn't be able to really build out, I mean, it has to be very small and everything else. But yeah, like in terms of square footage, I'll give that just a big enough condition for that.
Because the other thing that I didn't have a like that happened was where the the homes in Amherst Village, that because they lifted them so far, the basement so far out of ground, that the basement was counted as being living space where that house really wouldn't have made the cut without having that basement square footage because they raised it up out of the ground.
Right.
Like, do you see a way to not fall into that trap again? To get around square footage?
The other thing I was gonna give as a piece of information as well is between the three parcels, the three largest parcels that take up that light industrial area, it's about 32 total acres of land in that area. Excluding the county, like departmental roads, like area that they have there, it's about 11 acres. So I just need some graphics in terms of the sizes that we're looking at.
As I look at this, I just, I guess the question I'd like to ask is, does everybody agree that, because I'm not 100 on it, that that's a desirable place for larger homes with larger with larger lots? That that is, that that works there?
With the Victoria?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I think the downtown houses, some of them are just, I think they're beautiful.
All right. And it does happen, there's a lot of communities that require a minimum square footage and on size.
I mean, we do, but I mean, another community is here.
I think 768 is way out of anywhere else that I know of. I know Roselle went to 960. You know, I know communities that I was involved in. And that was years and years and years ago. You know, 768 is pretty outdated.
That's that's a doghouse.
I think my recommendation would be, you guys, like I said, you do whatever you want in there. I think SF, the SF district might be a little large for that area. I think SF1 is just a good tweener type of position. And it wouldn't be too dramatic of a difference from the surrounding older neighborhood around there, as well as what's across the creek.
What are the lot size difference again?
Between
SF and SF1?
Between SF and SF1, so SF is 12,000 square feet, which is a quarter acre. And then SF1 is 8,700. So it's about 3,300 square foot difference.
So you go from a one, from a hundred foot width to a 70 foot width. But I think the chimney is a good spot to be.
You could put a nice range on that.
Yeah. It was like when I drive down what they call in decor.
River ropes?
River ropes.
Oh, yeah, those are nice.
You know, those lots right there, those 70 foot lots, and you can see the difference. You can really see the difference.
So, okay, everybody content on single family one? Anybody opposed to that? Good? Okay, so the last parcels, be it the Victoria and to Main, generally, Pembroke area, light industrial to single family one. So if there's no more questions.
Did you address the Rite Aid property?
We did.
Okay.
It's
What was it?
General business to multifamily. Which, you know what, I guess I'd maybe bring this up here. I mean, we do have the approval to go forward with it. But was this not changing across the street? Is it something we still want to do? It's commercial across the street?
Oh, you mean on, behind the Rite Aid?
Yeah. There was some discussion at council that Lennox, Lennox has the east, property east of that zone as single family, so it is still a nice offer. We did multifamily.
I don't know if it's true, but I was told Lamardo already bought that land.
Lamardo, are you sure? So Lamardo owns that one?
I was told, but I didn't look in for which property.
The east, property east of the triangle property you have.
He was horse farming.
Don Clark. So
I know he owns
in a, in a property to Gracie.
Oh, it's in a plot like this?
We still have one parcel, more of the Rite Aid smaller parcel than Lamardo owns next to that. Going from there to the Lenox Townsfield Firehouse.
So we do have the recommendation from council to go forward with that, so I don't know.
I do like the buffer between commercial, multifamily to single family. I like that. I like that it's a good flow.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I thought that buffers, you know, really should, you know, I mean, perfect situation, I thought it should flow.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, for multifamily, yeah.
Okay, that's it? Then if we're all good, any more questions? Concerns? Okay, so motion to set the public hearing for what was the date, the number?
November 2nd.
November 2nd.
What time?
Do you want to come early, or do you want to just do it at 7?
Typically, you know, honesty, unless we have to unify Meadow Creek and those parcels out there. Typically, you don't get many people to show up at these.
I'm good with 7 o'clock, right? I'm good at putting it into our regular meetings.
It is an election day.
Oh, yeah.
You're right, no?
Well, then still 7 would be
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Remove. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. I got to show you, you know, what doable call is. Chris Dilbert?
Yes.
Rob Canell?
Yes.
Tracy Bonkowski?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan-Dilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims, sorry, my eyes are going all over the place.
Yes.
Genevieve Brodset?
Yes.
And Rachel Woodson is yes.
So just in the motion, all parcels are included and
I'll list them.
What they're changing from, to and from.
Yep. Okay, moving on, master plans. Oh, hang on, I have one second. I know we, the land moratorium with council is ending on the 14th, which is next week of the council meeting, so That was supposed to be on this agenda too. Recommendation to Right, so that's why I'm bringing it up now, because it's kind of part of the zoning. Are we gonna recommend extending the land moratorium? Because obviously, we're gonna need it at least until November. Right. To have it do the public hearing.
You want a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda at sticking between 1 and 2, so one and a half?
One B?
One B. Discussion and action on the moratorium recommendation to the village council.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. So we'll move on to think of, moratorium, and Rachel, moratorium recommendation. So we would ask for council to extend moratorium to November. Just for, so that everyone knows as far as that recommendation, so far, moratorium has not halted any any activity in the village and has not impacted anyone negatively, so
So, so we just want to get past our public hearing dates?
Yes.
So to the next council meeting, the 9th?
Of November?
Yeah.
And the Melvied.
As long as everything goes good, yeah. Because we would make the recommendation to council on the rezoning, they would accept it. It would have to be posted. So it might actually require around one month.
I would think that's the goal too.
Do you want to just go to December? Because it will be posted, how many
This is 13 days?
15?
I think it's, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe take it to December.
The December meeting is December 7th for council. Or do you want to take it to our meeting? Wait, no.
Take it to the
December 14th is council, 7th is ours.
Take it to them?
No, it's got to be their meeting because they have to So December 14th?
Yep. So motion to ask council to extend the land moratorium to December 14th.
Is there a second on that?
I'm sorry, do we actually vote on the other, to rezon, or recommendation to rezon?
Well, we have to have a public meeting, and then we have to recommend that they rezon.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was just trying to get my order straight.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so, uh...
So, so...
There's a motion on the table. Rod, you sent me that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
December 7th?
14th.
14th, I'm sorry.
14th?
Well, however you wrote it.
You won't be a vendor.
You have to be here.
Okay, master plan discussion, this will just be an update as to where we are with the master plan.
I'm sorry, are we short people for December 14th? So you can't be here?
Who said that?
I thought that's what...
No, she was trying to speak one evening, which I've been trying over years, and I have to get her to speak for me.
Oh, you're probably going to change that now?
Well, that's the wife's birthday, but it's no big deal.
Well, that's the council meeting.
That's the council meeting, it's not ours.
You're good.
Exactly. Yes, and sisters, uh, they're harder to dream.
Oh, they're impossible, dude. I got my own, sorry, boss. But, you know, it's good, keeps me aligned, too, if my wife's...
Just let you know I have a mind of my own.
They all, they all help out.
Okay, master plan, uh, update, John?
So, uh, continuing to update documents, um, just finished the demographic section again. And now I'm going through the next phases of the overall land status and stuff to make sure that's all up to date. Um, and then I'll be diving in to see if I can reformat the goals and objectives section, so it's prettier. But all the concepts can be used, um, one more time before. Um, and different updates that we had over the course of the last couple of meetings, when we talked about adding, um, the desire to look at architecture design IQs, or look at corridor studies, or look at differences like that, like non-motorized plans, um, farthest Asian plans, and putting that stuff into the goals and objectives. Um, we're making good progress, and I'm supposed to be with our graphic design team next week to start talking about putting together a template, uh, for what the overall, like, Adobe products can look like for the old graphics or anything else, to see if we can get some new photos as well, so... Yeah, it's, uh, it's coming along.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
I got three things on that.
Yep.
Um, one, I had given, um, a copy of the master plan to my son, who is a eddling photographer. And, uh, I told him to go out and about and see if he can make, you know, some better stuff than what, you know, updated things than what we have. Um, that he could submit them for approval. Um, I am, I created a 42-page presentation for you, a PowerPoint to give you. I have like six pages left of it, because I don't know what the hell happened to it, but it all disappeared to little boxes and... But I was working on those, those standards, the boulevard concepts. I did find the, um, the latest greatest 26-mile study, which was 2005, and with incorporating that, and, but... I hopefully will rebuild it for the next meeting. Um, but I wanted to show some ideas of things that I think we could do. You know, I talked about the roundabouts. Um, and, um, I know you mentioned like, uh, Orient Township, what they had done with, um, um... So I went through a whole lot of pluses and minuses of each concept. Um, downtown street planning, all sorts of stuff. Um, but when I went to print it out for you guys today, it was down to four pages of something, I don't know. They looked like this now. Versus things like this. This is what it, some of the printouts that I had.
Do you have that in the file? Like, do you know it?
I, I, I have, I have a couple of pages that I've got that are still left. That's all I got. All the rest of the pages look like this. Um, so I, I worked on it for a good month, so hopefully it goes faster this time around, because I've done it once. Um, but I don't understand, because even the backup copy I had of it was, was the same way. So I don't quite understand what happened there. My tech guy at work spent an hour and a half trying to retrieve it, it didn't work out.
I like the idea that the kids taking pictures.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys have those and want to share, like, you can feel free to just share them with us, and we can put it into the document.
Can you send us the latest version with the demographic changes? Because you're saying that, that portion of it's in there now?
Yeah, the only thing that's not done is the, the graphic representation of it, because the graphic artist is supposed to like have changed the actual graphic quality. I, I created the template, I know that he makes nice, so, um, so he's got all the data and all the numbers and everything else, they're all brand new, it's just not like finished, so... But as soon as it gets done, um, I can shoot out with the guys so you can see what it looks like.
And then Rod, whenever you get that, can you just, can you send it to everyone?
Yep. I did find something interesting in that, um, 26-mile plan, that they, they wanted to do 626 mile by 2017. And, um, because our population would be, um, by 2030 would be at, um, where is it here? At 3921. I guess the latest set since we hit 5,079. Um, so we're kind of blowing away those, uh...
It's still higher than that.
Yeah, I think it's over 6.
Yeah, I would think so, with all the building.
The unofficial number is 6,034.
6,034. So when I saw that in the document and what I read was that the, the county and state, just like how they redid the Van Dyke area already, which was ahead of their schedule in this plan, um, if we're having that kind of growth, I don't know if that speed up our 26-mile, while considering it's behind, I think it was 2017 they were supposed to, to make us into a boulevard, 150-row right-of-way, and, uh, two lanes and a boulevard down the middle, a 60-foot boulevard.
An unfortunate piece though, behind that, what drives that is revenue. And there's been a drastic change in the revenue in our state, so that affects projects that they thought they would want to do. So, I like what you're saying about, well, hey, we passed this number, look, come on and give us what you said we would get, but it's about revenue, unfortunately.
Why just want our part of it to be in sync with what they've discussed? So that we're, you know, we, our plan is sitting there too, when they go to do something that we're, we're prepared.
It appears as a county from the county state, they're focused on 23-mile road and the extension of the barrio. That's their primary focus. And what they have is, they may put in that light, and they're extending their field more. From, that was 22, 22 was a 24.
I just want our, us to have our ducks in our way before they actually come in and say, oh, we're doing this, and since you guys didn't do anything, we're going to do it away. You know, we don't need your input now, it's too late.
Good?
I'm on it.
Okay.
Is the, uh, let me, uh, is the non-motorized, um, conversation part of our master plan?
Um, you can make recommendations for the goals and objectives that kind of dive into that deeper, because it's usually its own study. Um, but it's something that we can make reference to as, as something we want to achieve in the master plan.
Because I, I know from a county standpoint, a SCOTC standpoint, there's conversations for us to make the, Lennox, um, and Leaven and the Baltimore, and fully connecting the, uh, the, like, Orchard Trail, with Meadow Brook.
Yeah, and those conversations also, it was through Rich and the wife, something you're saying, that the, uh, the SCOTC probably had to try to connect into their, Charlotte goes north, up the next stuff.
And to Tracy's point of money, that's where I wonder if all this big, uh, infrastructure does plant, pan, plan does go through, and everybody's going to take and drop their plans in front of whoever's making those decisions. Um, I don't know what kind of input we get. But it'd be nice if we had a plan to drop in front of them.
Yeah, no, like, the county has the, um, the non-motorized plan that kind of identifies like priority grounds and different things like that. Um, I believe they identified rashes and those like priority areas, that they're trying to like build up connectivity through and, um, honestly, fully developing, investing in the Orchard Trail or anything else, but that's something we already kind of have with, with that. But in terms of the local network, that's something we do lack. And, you know, it's something, it's probably worth studying in terms of what does a comprehensive non-motorized plan look like for the village. It could be something as simple as like completing sidewalks, like where do we have sidewalk gaps? Where do we have these things where, you know, there's users, but there's no crossings, and there's no, um, safety markers or whatever else? What is, what is the law hanging fruit? Which seems like law hanging fruit, but like, maybe a $200,000 crossing, a cop crossing or something like that. But, um, that's where the study can come again, and you can kind of identify those gaps as the sort of kind of problem to the community.
Can we as a community, um, because we, we always wait for sidewalks to be built by a developer when they develop it. But there's tons of empty spaces. Shouldn't we be able to require them to pay for the sidewalk on their property, even if there isn't a house or a building or a, a whatever on it? If that's their property and we require sidewalks?
Well, the ordinance would have to change, because right now, you know, sidewalks are not required unless it's a structure on their property.
So we have to change our ordinance in order to...
Yeah, and I don't know if we're going to withstand the challenge.
You think so?
We'd be able to practically enforce that, I guess.
No?
Because that, that, I mean, that sidewalk, when you destroy it, when you go to, you go to, house or whatever. And right now, the village, uh, the project that's going on right now, is selling in spots where there's no sidewalks currently. Which pretty much, the, the community is pretty much connected with sidewalks, but there's a couple of areas of high, um, walking traffic. I was, uh, Haven Ridge and one of them, they're putting sidewalks on the west side of Haven Ridge, uh, from Prospect to Marlowe, and they're putting a sidewalk down Marlowe to connect to the Loomis.
Oh, great. Um... Well, we're paying for that as a village, right?
Uh-huh.
We're paying for that as the village, right?
No, it's a grant.
Grant.
It's a grant.
But it's not the property owners paying?
No, it's not the property owners. Uh, there are some property owners that did most sidewalks put in front of their property, but they, they really have no choice in the matter. There's some sidewalks going on Roosevelt from Carl to Main, there's sidewalks on Main, on the east side of Main, that currently don't have sidewalks. And I think there's, uh, sidewalks going on the, uh, north side of Carl Street. So, there's, when it's all said and done, there's going to be very few areas where you don't have a sidewalk.
But those, if we put a, a regular sidewalk in, that doesn't qualify for the trails aspect unless it's a certain width, correct?
Well, we're coming back five-foot sidewalks.
Oh, they're wider sidewalks?
Oh, yeah, all our new sidewalks, even the ones we did last year were five-foot.
Oh, okay.
And of course, then you have, uh, the ADA compliant, you know, things, whatever. They're all five-foot sidewalks. And some of them that were done last year were basements, uh, old, um, three-foot sidewalks.
Because would those qualify when there's maintenance dollars for, for trails within the community? Would you still, would you be able to place it towards those sidewalks? Like, what are the width of the, the tar ones through the high school and, uh, Down River?
Five-foot.
Those are five-foot, those, the, the, I don't know, what, what are they considered, tar or?
Asphalt.
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 Because that's where money goes towards when you apply for those grants, it, it, so it doesn't matter the material built or just the width?
No.
Okay.
A lot of times if we have like, um, SCOTC grants or MDOT grants, or particularly like the state or federal funds, um, if you're doing trail-specific developments, um, they do have like minimum standards for like rates, as well as with, um, the old standard used to give the foot trails, if a wide trails, like, like, got out, even the technical wide trails. Uh, but I think they call me safety paths, or whatever the documentation is, and they make, but, um, it's what the latest standard is, so if you develop something for those problems, a lot of times I have minimum standards to follow, um, to be able to use the box for developments as you are.
So there was a bit of issue with maybe a sidewalk, could we just add, which is meant, doesn't necessarily have to be a republic, you'll put it new, could you use expansion, widen it?
Yeah, widen it, um, the other thing too is like, there's also other grants out there, uh, a lot of times you're kind of paying, but, uh, like, like, but the good programs, like, um, like State Cross School, Great Program, a lot of good funds. But at least it has to be designated, be scored up, and then it does allow, um, community, um, engagement if you do this. Pro long process, because they're investing more dedicated to the sidewalk, um, so, yeah.
My son took a picture of something on the Orchard Trail where they posted a sign that they were getting grant money for repair work to it. And anything that he sees like that, as he rides his bike all over the place, he likes to make sure I know. And we don't have that, so he doesn't have to drive to Richmond to get on a trail. But he says that they're rebuilding the one that's already been built out there before we patented the dollars once.
Another thing I, I did sort of, is I would like to see it put in the master plans, just very generically, because obviously we don't have a plan with Salt River right now.
Salt River? I feel like there's something that we're working on. I can, I can get your information on Salt River. Um, because I feel like Jerry, have you guys ever heard of, talked to Jerry in Elsinore?
No, but I know there's a plan to develop from the paddle park all the way up. So, well, they're, they're talking about it, and I've been trying to stay connected so that we're part of the conversation. But since Dan departed, Chesterfield, kind of, I don't know, I can't figure out who the leadership is now in that program. Do you know?
They just appointed someone new.
Okay.
The, the, commit the township trustees did. Um, I think the person's been on the job for a month and a half, I don't know, it's been a summer.
Okay. If you could forward me that information, that would be great, so that I could reach out to him or her.
To make the Salt River paddle?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's a, that's been a long-term plan.
Right.
You're cleaning the Salt River up through Lennox Township. From, from the Jefferson area, and just, just bring it, just clean it all the way up to the village, up through Lennox Township. Because the, the part of their bike path is, well, there's a couple of different suggestions. One is to follow the Salt River. And then there's other plans out there, or other suggestions that they follow the ration.
Wow, wouldn't that be a problem?
Yeah, because just, I'm just, as I drive by, I notice that next to the plaza where the, um, Fendis and the Dog Room are, is, you know, that's all Eastman, that's part of the Salt River, like, that could just be a little side park off of that. You know what I mean, if you're paddling for another community, that you could just...
Pull up?
Pull up and, I don't know.
Drop in?
Drink your water or, or drop in.
Maybe there's a little gazebo or... Picnic area covered?
And all the, how it started is they tried to get everybody talking, like, all of the communities, because then if you go as a group, look at, we, we have the support of all the, going through every one of those communities, it's a little bit easier to get the dollars.
That'd be quite different than my scouts going out there trying to drag couches out of us.
Yeah.
This is a mortar and mortar, you know?
Yes, they'd be, you know, dredging it.
Yes.
I'm just taking out the, getting the old trees out of the creek and whatnot, because there's a spread, you know, I'll be the five-second history last night on Schmuck Street, from Park to Carson, where those homes, uh, backed up to the Salt River right there.
Yep.
That was a park back in the mid-sixties.
I was told that. I went back there looking to see if any remnants of a park, and I can't find one thing.
So what happened, Chris? What, when?
Well, because the river doesn't flow the way it should, you know, up and down.
Doesn't flow.
It, it floods.
Okay.
And it's just not usable right now.
Okay.
There's so many downed trees, so... There's so many downed trees, so many obstructions. Once you get down to the ratchet ridge, I mean, you can see where the river, it just doesn't flow. Ends up being cleaned for.
So you heard there was a park back there?
Yeah, there was a park back there.
What happens, all the equipment, it must have been damaged?
It, you know, just deteriorated. I heard swing sets that were barbecue.
Pulled out.
I mean, we pulled a tire out of there. It was from the 50s, a big old white ball and, you know. There's a couch back there. How did you get a couch back there? Reclining couch?
You should see the number of trees in the, what's behind Amber, or the tires, what's behind Amber.
Yeah. Just, you know, the brick is still, never is sold. You know, it's probably forty, fifty years overdue from being maintained.
I do want to add one more thing. While I know that also belongs in the master plan, did speed limit reduction on rashing with the schools on me and such. There was talk about that at some point in time when the previous administrator at the schools. However, she left and then COVID happened, so I really haven't reached back out as I can to be occupied. But there was some talk about a joint effort of the village and the school district reaching out to me. I don't know if that belongs in the master plan or if that's just.
Again, so there's a revival of the library again? Put it in the pen right there.
You okay?
Usually I'm the camper when this happens.
I can't see through the plexiglass, you're much better than me.
What about the library?
Um, I guess Dan's on the board there now. So I guess he's trying to revive the building of the new building.
That's where the cover entrance is going. There's still ladders.
I guess they talked to Lombardo about the drive for the parking lot or something and possibly helping with that part of it.
Well, you know, it's probably what I worry. And I certainly apologize for that, it's a matter of fact issue. But they don't have the financial backing. You know, the millage that we pay for the library does not, does not generate enough.
Yeah.
No, no financial restitution to give them above the building.
You mean the generous benefit?
Yeah, the generous benefit. There's a couple of growth, a couple of years ago, my library board wanted to build it to guarantee a bond. And of course, they can't, they said, it's going to be a bad thing. They can't guarantee a bond.
Library's a hard sell. Well, hasn't.
It's a hard sell. I mean, the one in Chesterfield is still. It's just, you know, we're not going to guarantee you, sign me another bond, and then they can follow them and then lose responsibility. Just don't take it on this hand. And like I said, their, their millage doesn't, it doesn't generate enough.
No, they would definitely have to go out for millager something. I mean, it sounds like they have a rough time with the money they have to keep that one going from the budget.
Unfortunately, because, I mean, you know, what they do with their limited space up there is pretty dirty.
Yeah.
But it's just unfortunate that in today's age, libraries, like I said, Chesterfield Millage Field. And, you know, it's just a hard sell nowadays.
I drive by McCombs in Chest, in Hilton Township and I go there a lot. I mean, I've got to stand in line to, I mean, but what they offer is just huge. It's, you know, it can generate that kind of people to get through it. And you can't really do that in the facility they have, that ever.
Anybody else sorry to, Chris?
I just want to kind of be, I don't know if this is appropriate at this time. John will be able to help us with this. I'm noticing some smaller communities, it seems like there are going to be colleges come in and help them with some planning. So do you, is that viable? Is this viable for us? And are you able to connect us with a college or?
So when I was at Wayne State, we had our, our master's program. We went out with a senior capstone project for like the third years or whatever we were at the time of grad school. And for that project, we would be searching out like what other communities are looking for. We sent out some like notification that came with the projects. Typically, there's still the cost associated with it. It's actually a reduced cost. And then like, yeah, the students would do the study. But any, any community's viable for it. Like we've done, they've done small neighborhoods and entire communities. We did a specific sub-area plan or something like that, or a specific target thing. Typically, typically it's not like a master plan. It's usually a one specific thing you want them to look at and like really flush out research.
I was thinking about like, you know, where I was talking about roundabouts and things like that. And obviously, we're not architects or land planners. And we need that professional help with that. And I just wondered if maybe that could be possible for us when we get there.
Yeah, I think there's something where like, if we get there like then, that's something you're interested in looking at doing and giving a class that opportunity. You reach out to U of M, you reach out to MSU, you reach out to Wayne State, which are the three, and Eastern Michigan I think has programs as well. Those four schools have planning-related programs. And U of M specifically has more of a design focus to it. And then beyond that, if you want to start getting some like more like landscape architecture or civil engineering, that type of stuff. You can start looking at like Florence time. You can look at U of D potentially as other options for those type of groups of people that have to do a separate studies, if you're like for more of a design-centric.
And it's more affordable say than if we were to?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a lot, yeah. It'd be, Chris, like you don't know, it'd be more of a crap shoot in terms of what you're getting for it. Because you don't know what the students are going to produce. But it would be something that would be worthwhile. At the end of the day, you may still need to like hire like a formal like consultants, but that would be the source they would be given references.
Okay.
And maybe like two grand versus like ten for twenty. So.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
That's great, I think, Chris. Maybe they designed this up like downtown and how to deal with whatever's on that property and.
Yeah, so like, for example, when I was at grad school, like our, our senior capstone study was researching River Rouge and Dearborn. And we were figuring out like a trail system for around River Rouge, U of M, Dearborn and tie into downtown. And that was our whole study, was figuring out route, ridership, some loose branding for what you can do with it. We did a survey for like what would name, name the trail system. And then just did some basic like environmental and topographical stuff like that. So just so you at least have some type of bare bones. You could probably use a different plan, it's like a five or a grand if you wanted to. To just say, hey, we just thought to it, we want more money or put more thought to it. So.
Did they go through with it?
Um, I think we used some of the elements that we had and were developing materials for it. So.
And anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to the next building code ordinance, review building materials. This is going to come as a recognition council, we decide to vote on it. With some of the properties that we potentially have available in the community, there has been some concerns brought up about with the current building materials that are being used. So the biggest concern is that exterior trim, the weather.
Proof?
Are they proof? Was that the word?
Resilient.
Resilient, thank you.
Is that not in the current building code?
No.
The, the national building code, I think.
Well, Lombardo?
No. I mean, that, that's part of us. I mean, they have a standard, you still can go above that.
Right, but we, we follow the national building code here, get the village correct?
Yeah.
So if they're putting in a substandard product, is that enough?
It's not. It's not substandard.
Okay.
So let's be careful.
Yes.
Yeah, it's just cheap.
Because you can take a very piece of wood and it depends on how you.
Finish it.
Finish it.
That's right. That's my concern, Chris.
Like, my house is all, you know, it, it's not wood. It's like little perky things glued together, like sawdust.
It's MDF. That's what they, sure cut it over there.
I, I don't even think that that is what that is.
It is.
Yeah, the MDFs.
Right.
Yeah, because I have MDF that I've used outside and it's painted and it's great, but that stuff on my house exploded like.
Well, because it wasn't properly finished from the get-go. So my question I'm going to propose is, is that a material? Is it the fault of the material or is it the fault of the finish? And as a village, the inspector, are they not responsible for meeting the requirements? I'm trying to keep us out of trouble.
I mean, like mine, I'm replacing now with fiberglass. I don't have to paint it and I don't have to screw with it. And it doesn't expand to where I can't open the door and things of that nature. So it can be put in material, we request on wood trim that it, the same with, you know, the siding and the hardy plank. Like, I don't, they sold me hardy plank, but I got some generic hardy cement board. That when I called hardy plank for my warranty, which they hated shit paid before, then they went, this junk is not hardy plank. This is, you know, so-and-so's cement board. Of which, there is no warranty and if you were sucker enough to get it stuck on your house, I'm sorry for you, but that's what it does, it cracks up and falls off.
So basically, what we're, what we're looking at is that we've had a lot of concerns within the community about some of the building materials and the frequency to which they have to replace it. So we are looking at ensuring that this problem doesn't continue. So.
And how do we do that?
It was we. Sorry.
Me? My poor neighbor Mike is on his third set of, set of trim he's replacing. Then he's got the guy to come out and give him a quote finally and he's going to start. In sixteen years, he's on his third set of crap materials.
But who put in, okay, so.
Okay, so Ann, Ann has made a request on the planning submission to ensure that our future building material usage is of a, of a fluid. So that it's consistent within communities and more longstanding than what exists. How's that?
I think we're setting ourselves up for trouble because I could buy a lot.
Who has a builder's license on this board?
Pardon?
Who has a builder's license on this board? But I'm not going to put my two cents out there, I'd be a damn fool.
None of us are qualified, are we?
We're not qualified for this. And the building inspectors that do the inspection, they're not going to look for fit and finished. They're going to make sure that it's property, that the footings are the proper depth, the proper width, that the two bys are sixteen on center, that the, you know, whatever. Idoys and da-da-da-da-da. They're, they don't care if you paint your house purple pink.
No, that's not a concern though, is what they painted. But shouldn't the inspector be making sure what was sold?
No.
As part of protecting people here in the village?
What qualifies him?
To say that there's a certain material that's supposed to be used, that it's used?
Two bys and, you know, OSB and da-da-da-da-da. That's how he's worried about it, that is, the house is put together proper.
And finished.
But the finish, you know, whether it's hardy board, whether it's vinyl, whether it's brick, okay?
There's still maintenance that needs to be done.
Still maintenance needs to be done, absolutely.
You have to paint the trim on your house every so many years or it's going to rot. And as far as, I'm sorry, Chris, I interrupted you, I'm going to.
No, no.
Okay. As far as, I, I understand what you're saying and I, I, I have some sympathy that to, it doesn't feel good that I bought this and it didn't hold up and it, it broke or what have you. But it's my job as a consumer. If I bought something from you that it's finished properly or it's the right material, it's not, I, it's putting us in a, in a situation that from a legal standpoint probably isn't the best.
I would agree with that.
But as a consumer, and that's my house built and it's being inspected by the village that I'm moving into or living in.
That your house was built proper.
Yes, right.
The structure is sound.
Yes.
In order to know the finishes that you selected, they would have to go through all of your documents to know what wood you selected, what exterior, everything you selected. The building inspector doesn't have time to do that. Is he going to go through and make sure that the hardy plank board that you signed in your paperwork is actually on your house? No, that's kind of on you to make sure.
See, I wouldn't have ever assumed that, that if I'm buying a product and the village is okaying the product that I'm buying.
They're not okaying.
That, so that's, that as a consumer is what I think is happening though. That my house can be built to the specs because there's all these inspectors tagging the hell out of my house with everything.
And when you see those tags, those tags are, the rough is done, okay? The rough in Mexico is done.
Plumbing.
The rough HVAC is done, okay? Then they come back, you know, once it's insulated and, you know, they won't set the insulation standard, okay? But that's a federal code. And, and once the drywall is hung and da-da-da-da-da, and you know, like you have to finish it, like you have to finish HVAC, you have to finish plumbing. But if you want to put hardy board on the exterior, you don't care. You really don't care. The only thing that they won't check is, if your house is being brick, is that you have the brick ties. You know, which are, you know, those, those small brackets that are nailed to your house that are.
Touched to the brick, yeah.
Yeah, to keep your brick from pulling weak. That's the only thing they're going to check. And if you've got a weeping hole at the three foot level. Okay? That's the only thing they're going to check. But the quality of the brick? Give me a bunch of bricks from Jewelry Brick Man, you know?
And again, I would assume that if they're putting a, a brick on my house, that they would know that it's a, you know, it's not some guy who's building these bricks in their backyard somewhere.
It's your responsibility as they're building your house to make sure everything is as it should be.
Breaking up a wrong job, but I, I think that's a kind of one that we don't want.
Like that MDF trim, that was very sad when they switched over to the MDF trim, exterior trim there. Now, can it work? Yes, if it's painted properly, you know, with the proper paint. But the unfortunate thing is, it probably got whitewashed with paint, which the building inspector, again, the house, the paint is trimmed. It's foreseeable. I mean, everything except your flooring has to be done, you know, it'll get the seal.
That's right.
That's it. You can only have bare wood, but as long as that trim's painted white or whatever color it is, that you.
And most builders, they spray it.
They spray it.
So that, you know, that spray coat is.
Water.
It's water.
I wasn't allowed to get in my house until I had flooring. You're saying that?
Yeah, you can with it. You get a seal without flooring.
I couldn't.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I did mine.
We were, yeah.
Flooring is not required.
Yeah, because we did our floors.
They held this up because I was doing my floors myself and hardly I gave the X amount of dollars to do it myself. And then when they went to close it, said, no, you got to put the flooring.
Well, now your lender may not. Your, your lender may not.
There you go.
Okay. But as far as building in the seal, oh. If you want to walk around and get your business in your feet, have at it. But your lender may not approve it.
I was told it was the building department, so I had to go in there and build the floors one weekend before they closed the house. When they weren't there. They said, don't go there when the village is there because you got to put in these floors and get them done and then, you know, we'll have them come back on Monday or Tuesday and like that.
You know, that could have changed, but you know, there was time and flooring, you know, was not required.
I thought it was, it was, but.
Okay. Before we dive any deeper into this, shall I assume that no recognition is coming from planning? coming from planning?
But do these kind of.
Well, one second, is there a recommendation?
But do these kind of things also fall into when we do a PUD, because that allows us, because we're going off the reservation of things to say X, Y, Z is required, and it can be put into the PUD to require certain things that.
I'll let John.
I think within a PUD, we treat it more similarly to an association type setup where you can negotiate like percentages of coverage for a structure, so you'd be like fifty percent of the structure has to be brick. We only will allow stone, brick and vinyl, natural woods.
No cinder block.
No cinder block, like no sheet metal, although you, you can negotiate stuff more similarly, similarly to how the home association would do it. Now, we typically don't give as nuanced as like colors and stuff like that. The other thing that I've seen in that is like when you start having anti but not me standards, where you say like every third house has to be a different color or you can't have more than two houses next door to each other of the same color. You have stuff like that within agreements, where typically it would be like we only will allow beige, but like different thing. That's usually like what you'll see interjected in there, that maybe some strong recommendations in terms of what you'd like to see. But usually this is as nuanced as some of the more intricate details of the building.
Decor Park had to have white, you can only have white garage doors.
But is that a village standard or is that the association?
That was, that was, no, because there was no association, that was a negotiation between the village and Lombardo.
I think it was part of the PUD.
It was part of the PUD, when they discussed that you have to have white trim, it can't be beige, it can't be off-white, it has to be bright white trim, it has to be white garage doors.
Yeah, it's the Bible.
But that was a negotiation between the village attorney, planning and the builder when they built up the PUD. So I mean, we can take a bigger interest in what happens in a PUD than what we have, correct?
Was it?
We can negotiate those things within a PUD in those communities where their materials looking for a certain standard to be built in that.
No, I, I still don't think we can dictate what type of board to have to use on a trim.
I'm just gonna say this, it doesn't, I don't think this is gonna go anywhere, so discussing it, unless I'm wrong, unless, unless we make a motion at the table. I mean, we can discuss what we can and cannot do, but if we're not gonna do anything, we're not gonna do anything.
I don't think it's a waste of time to make a motion if no one is, thinks it has a, is there anybody?
I mean, you put the motion up, we all see this.
Well, we'll throw it up there.
Is that probably a good way to go or just leave it?
Can't we just leave it and then we can bring it back up, but we're not tied to it.
Yeah, table it, then. So motion to table?
I, I don't think there's any, I mean, we're not required to take action.
No.
So, I mean, we can't, I'm not even sure if it's taken or maybe.
Well, it's an item, which is.
But I, I personally am not sure how everyone else feels, I've seen no sense in us discussing it moving forward if it's not something that's feasible. Maybe if you wanna reach out or have someone reach out to the attorney and see what their thought process is and what kind of support there would be, but.
Yeah, I think I'd like to, to know what their opinion is, because like I said, there is details where that was done at Decor Park.
What, where?
In meetings that I came across.
So what?
As far as the, the commissioners and then they, they would look at the, you know, those plans and they'd come back from, that was the virtual royal, I wanna say it was?
But what do they have?
And attorney opinions.
But what do they have control over at Decor Park?
Well, it sounds like they had a lot of control because they were giving them ways to go around, instead of plating the property and saving all that time, money and expense.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the building materials?
But I'm saying that they did discuss those things.
So they, they, they discussed?
And they agreed upon, or they approved it.
Agreed upon what?
Is this something that we'd like the attorney to look at or do we just wanna move on?
I don't know, so did I do?
Why?
Okay.
Would anybody like to make a motion on the attorney or are we just, before I close it?
Well, I'd like to throw it at the attorney and ask him what, what our rights are to, I mean, I, I don't know, maybe I have different views of what I, I, as an official of the village, to protect the people that come here to live from things that they're not under the impression that they should have to even worry about. You know, I don't think that most people thought that within a year, all the paint was gonna come off of their, their house.
I'm just gonna say this is.
Their trim, and I, and this is trying to protect those people.
I'm gonna say that I feel that an attorney opinion would be good for this because this matter is a frequent dialogue at this table. And maybe we get an opinion that whether it should be a dialogue at this table or not at all going forward. And, you know, if it's not our place, it's not our place and therefore it doesn't come here anymore.
I don't think their, their opinion is gonna be whether it's our place or not.
Whether it's appropriate at all.
I don't think they're gonna give an opinion on whether it's, it's appropriate or not. I mean, you know, let, let's be honest, those attorneys or municipal attorneys, I'll say, they, they seem by, you know, they dance by a certain tune, okay? And if individuals say it's our place, then that attorney's gonna say, it's your place, okay?
Sure.
But I'm not gonna let an attorney or anyone else force me to take on a subject that, that I can't have a reasonable.
Uh, base.
Idea that I will, that, that I can defend it in court.
Gotcha.
Okay? Suicide is not my, 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 I don't have a, I don't take on suicide, so.
Okay, anybody or we just move on? Okay, moving on, new business. We have none. Planner's report, John. Public comments on non-agenda items in the public. Call from the table.
I just have a quick thing, what about the sign ordinance in, in the businesses? So would it, do you know where, what?
Uh, last I heard, Dave was working on it, they were getting logged and he was, it was still in the process.
Oh, because we're getting close?
Yes.
So we, there, there need to be some changes made?
There was some, and gosh, it's missed along, I'm very sorry for not having you there.
Are you talking about the inventory?
The inventory.
Well, the inventory and the notice, because we're coming up to where they're gonna have to start changing things that are no longer.
I think we gave them five years and we're coming up on three.
Right.
Right.
So there should be notices going out to kind of countdown is what you're saying?
Well, there should have been notices.
Did Anne, do you know if Anne addressed that at your table?
No. I mean, yes, no one has had them addressed at the table.
So.
Is it mentioned?
That was tricky, um, so.
Well, I've been brought up asking about the inventory before, but there's never been like a, this is the inventory.
I recall the dialogue and I just don't think.
Oh, I asked at this table and I asked at that table.
It was a different dialogue as to which they were going to dive into that ordinance again, which I thought was done at the council table to the amount of years. Was that not done at your table?
They, not, it hasn't changed.
It would have been, do you remember, like maybe six, eight months ago? It was quite some time ago because it was a discussion and I thought it was coming back to your table for, she wanted to propose a decrease in the amount of time to represent the time that has gone by, so I think it was five years, and I think she wanted to drop it or propose if we drop down to two or three from those years that already gone by.
Well, it was five years from the day the ordinance was passed.
Correct.
So her and I were, and I had, her and I were discussing that and she said, instead of doing that because two and a half years had already passed, it brought it more in line with what she was thinking.
Which was the three years.
Three years.
So as last I had addressed or reached out to anyone in the know of this, it was being worked on and that was a discussed matter, so I will reach out again.
I, I only continue to ask here and there about it because I think we made a change and yes, as a business owner, it's my responsibility to follow whatever rules are in place, but I thought as a courtesy that they be notified because it's the right thing to do.
No, I agree. I guess I think that that while we made, we created the ordinance, I'm not sure that it's really, I believe once, my opinion is once it's over there, it's over there and you would hope that those, like those questions should be answered from over there, I don't know that we can answer them.
I just wanted to let you know it's from May.
May, yes, that's the last time it was discussed.
Well, can we do something to support Tracy in saying we would like to know the inventory at some certain point to help support her?
Yeah.
And the reason.
Questioning?
Yeah, and the reason I'm being adamant about it, because it's very simple to sit at a table and go, yeah, let's do this and let's do this and let's do this, and then not worry about that it happens, but we have to follow through and make sure things are happening because pretty soon your buckets of new rules and regulations and things gets very full.
So as a, it's a five years from the adoption of the ordinance, the ordinance was adopted April thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, so it has to be completed and all the businesses have to be in compliance by April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, so.
Just three years out.
Okay, I will.
The original notices were sent out.
The notices that the ordinance was changed was sent out, but they were supposed to do an inventory of who was not in compliance with it, and I'm not sure that that inventory is.
That was never done, uh, someone volunteered to take it on and didn't.
Well, that, Dave has taken it over.
So he has taken it back?
Yes, Dave. But I was, I was informed, whenever this last came to the table, I did reach out and I was informed that Dave was working.
I mean, because it, there's, there's only, probably just that does.
Yeah, I think that was the number that we were given before.
So I will reach out again to get a status and then I will.
But, but as far as notifying the business owners, they were notified must that ordinance was adopted, that this was coming in a five-year window.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
And to be honest with you, Chris, I've never been told that. It's, oh, we're working on it, we're working on it, or we're figuring this out, I've never really been told. They all got notice.
They, they all were notified.
Yeah, they were notified of the ordinance, but just never those that were, which we had discussed at the table, that those that were not compliant should receive an additional notice. That has not taken place to the best of my knowledge by this time.
And I'm, I'm being pushy on this, Brad, for your benefit, because we, when I talk often about.
We talk about this often.
Yeah, all these things happen and nobody knows about it or.
Nobody follows.
So, there's no follow-through.
Well, but, you know, here, you know, let's be honest, the planning commission goes through the process and creates the ordinance and we send it to council for adoption. Council adopts it, council also has the responsibility for enforcing.
I don't disagree with you, Chris.
So it doesn't come back to us?
That's, that's kinda what I was trying to say, so thank you, but, no, well.
I agree, it's, and I'm not trying to give you a hard time about it, I'm just.
No, it is, it is important to me, it, it is important to me that it does get followed through. What, are you leaving?
And I'll just say.
Oh, I thought we were done.
There has not been a motion to adjourn, yes.
Oh, God.
And I'll just.
Dude, you missed seven minutes.
The rezoning at, at Oak Ridge.
Yes, no, I, I agree with that, it's, you know, I, I would say that I agree that it needs to be done and I just don't know that it's necessarily our job to be the constant overseers of its enforcement.
But whose job is it to make sure that we don't waste every single moment that we spend here and at least not attempt to say, hey, remember us, we sent you this and you agreed to it?
But we're not micromanagers.
Well, no, it's not micromanaging, it's.
It is, we've done our job and sent it out.
And that's kind of what I'm trying to say, while, you know.
And if this was a big organization with all sorts of department heads and people that could, you know, full-time pay a hundred and fifty grand a year, I'd say, oh, fine, you know, that can get done, but we don't even pay the person that brought us the place that kind of money, we don't even pay them, you know, living wage, you know, it always bother me if we have an administrator, president of the village and, you know, they could make twenty times more at McDonald's than they make running a village. So, I don't know, somebody needs to, you know, prod people here and there to do the, otherwise this is just a waste of time altogether.
We have, you know, our committees like planning and park and rec and those, you know, and then we have the administrative side, it's the administration's, the administration's responsibility for enforcement, whether they designate the building inspector or who up, okay, but the, the administration, they're responsible for enforcement, period. You know, we don't, like I said, we don't have fifteen department heads that we can pass this off on.
No.
It goes from here to there.
That's it.
So, okay. Okay, um, any more, call from the table? I do have one comment, just because it was brought to our attention, um, or my attention, we need to try harder and I'm guilty, uh, from refraining from using business names within the community and specific names, period. When we're discussing things that do not specifically have to do with those people before us, it has been asked that we not really dive into examples of, of those types of things in within the community. Um, anybody else? Call, oh, motion to adjourn.
So.
Uh, favor?
Support.
Okay, yeah, eight point four.